In trouble for not enforcing any of these laws.
Right.
They're passing too many damn laws that no one can keep up with them. And they specifically mentioned, the head of the Senate Transportation. If they pass that law, no one's in compliance. That's what started it.
Is there any, uh, notes?
No, it's not.
You know what I do? What is that? It's it. Oh, is it time? All right. Um, are we supposed to have, um...
We have the...
Oh, just what's Donna?
Yeah, the kids after school have all these activities.
Oh, okay.
They couldn't make it back, but they're gonna do the PowerPoint for us.
Okay, all right. Are you all set?
Hi, Auntie.
Hi. Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School District Board of Directors meeting for Wednesday, April 29th. Opening, our agenda, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you will let me introduce our presentation?
Well, I'm going to introduce Donna Jones and Carol Holcomb as the ski club advisors tonight for a little presentation that they put together. Students, of course, have after-school activities and they weren't able to be here tonight, but we do want to thank the board for supporting the ski club and for supporting our transportation to and from school to attend this nine weeks?
Nine weeks.
Nine weeks. Yep, very good. So Donna and Carol, wanna say a few words and then if you would, show us our PowerPoint?
Okay. We did, we put this together because we wanted to show you the way the kids have grown so much. When we first started, like, a few years ago, we now, every year we add more students to our ski club. I think this year we were at 22, 2022 kids skiing. And we just wanted to show you how we started from the very beginning when we'd get on the bus and get ready, to our actual skiing. And most of the kids this year were able to make it up to the ski lift. They got beyond the magic carpet, beyond the rope tow, and they were actually skiing on, from the top of the mountain. So we put this, Carol and I put this together and we showed the kids, so that they'd have an idea of what they were looking at, of just what it was like being in the ski club this year. And we just wanted to thank you for your support in allowing us to go.
And while we're getting ready, Donna and Carol, I'd like to thank both of you for your time that you put forth for our students on Tuesday evenings for those nine weeks. Um, I know you enjoy it, but it is time away from your family and we appreciate that. And Diana, thank you for driving the students on the bus up to Willard Mountain as well. As long as you're here, I wanted to recognize you and thank you as well.
I think one thing that we, Carol and I, both experienced was Chris and Chip Wilson,
who own the mound, have been very good to us. And he's always commented on how well behaved our children are and how he can always tell where we sat, because it was always cleaned up when we left. And they've been just very good to us.
Well, we wanna thank you very much for taking the time. It looks like those children had a great time. And if this didn't happen, they wouldn't have had, a lot of them wouldn't have had the opportunity or the experience to go to this place.
For example, we can continue.
Snowboarding and skis, I see.
Yes.
Okay, good. What are the hours?
We leave here at dismissal.
Really?
And we get to Willard around four. Around four. And lessons start at 4:30. So the first day is a little bit, you know, because everyone's getting there quick and getting ready to go. But by the third and fourth week, we're there at four, they're ready to ski at 4:05, so they can go and ski before their lessons. And then their lesson goes from till six. Then they could, they come in for dinner and some of them go back out. And then we leave at 7:15. And we're home.
See, I think years ago, they used to have a ski club that left on a Friday at like 1:00. That's what originally the, the first ski club that started.
My kids were...
Did they? Yeah, yeah, they, that was... Thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
And thank the bus driver, too.
Lord have mercy to the Powell buses.
Yes.
Amen.
Okay, do we have any public comments? All right, seeing, hearing none. We'll move right down to our action items. We all have the treasurer's report. Is there any comment on the treasurer's report? Okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda.
Some move.
Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made, second it. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? No, good, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right. Policies, 5085, search and seizure, and this one is to adopt.
Some move.
Motion, have a second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, a second. Is there any discussion on the policy, 5085? No, all right, good. So all those in favor of adopting se- search and seizure, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right, moving right along. We're gonna jump right down to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Not much for me this evening. Um, negotiations is still ongoing. You do have a representative there, so I won't go into too much details. My role has really been to work with our Human Resources Director, Joy Cox, to try to get language for the Children's Medical Leave Act, part of the contract negotiations ironed out, so that we can get an agreement. We'll put a lot of time into that. I don't know how successful we're going to be getting that as part of the contract, but we do have a draft that will be presented next. Uh, the other thing that's been ongoing is principal evaluations and I'm working on that with the Assistant Superintendent Donna Leep, that all principals have had their initial meeting evaluation. I can show that with you, right? Yes. And that includes setting goals and that is also ongoing and making progress. Uh, the House and the Senate, as you know, the House bill was passed on education. And now the Senate, uh, the Senate Education Committee last Wednesday released their ed bill. And they're anticipating that that will be debated on the Senate floor next week. And you'd have, then we're gonna have two versions of that bill, the Senate bill, the House bill. And side-by-side comparisons are available. The Senate version does not have the spending cap that was in the House cap, but, and they have a slightly different take on consolidation. It's still really too early to tell what's gonna come out of there, other than we continue to monitor it. Because we, as we said, Senate debate on the floor next week, their bill gets ironed out, passed, goes to the Joint Committee, they see where the similarities are, then it comes back for a vote and then it still goes to the governor's table for passage. So a long way off, but we're getting a short period of time, so it, it could be happening fast, but we're continuing through our associations to monitor that. The other thing that I've been going to meetings on, and I wanna make you aware of it, because you do have students, a student, I believe, in the New England, the NECC program, which is at Molly Stark. And we are quickly approaching a numbers crunch with that program. And we are in discussions about where we would put a third classroom and what the impact that would be into all schools that send students into that program. Because if you recall, that is a Bennington School District program that other school districts tuition into. You're one, Woodford's one, Shasbury's one. And so when we look at what's coming up from the lower grades, we're seeing a capacity issue. And we're gonna somewhere need to put a third classroom for that program for next school year. And what I'm hearing from everybody is they're at capacity as far as classrooms. So we are, we're, we'll have a recommendation on where, where that's gonna be, so that we can accommodate the growing numbers. And even though we're gonna graduate some out, then, you know, we're gonna have to look at putting a program at the middle school next, as those students age out.
Well, actually, it probably would be beneficial to try to use the middle school, because then it wouldn't be quite as expensive.
Um, so you're volunteering, I want me to tell the middle school you volunteered them?
I definitely, yes.
Yeah, with, that is part of, was part of our discussion, is there enough room to, to house it there, or at least start a program there and, or putting a classroom in another school building rather than put them all in one. So we're looking, we're looking at capacity, class size, in all the buildings right now, but I wanted you aware of it, because you do participate in that program, so it could have some impact in the future.
Right. Well, that's good, but yeah, and I, I'm sure you're looking at the least cost-effective for all the learning districts.
The most cost-effective, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's really...
That's it.
Just been busy hiring people, and a lot of interviews with staff members from all the elementary schools, so.
Very good, all right.
Except us. Except you, you have a low turnover rate this year, or you're done?
Do we have any that's retired?
Nope.
No.
Which isn't the case in...
Once they come here, they, they stay, they love us.
At the high school and at Bennett Elementary, yeah, so a lot of openings.
Good, all right. So we'll move right down to the principals' report.
So initially, I want to publicly thank Caroline and Bruce Martel of the donated full-size catamount, Ms. Poppy. We had a student from each classroom represent their classroom for the unveiling, and then other classrooms went out to visit her afterwards. But she is a beautiful catamount that really makes the front of our school more appealing and smiles on students every day. As students leave at the end of the day, you see some parents and students come over to Ms. Poppy, and some of them are coming over on a daily basis, they just wanna see her before they go home. So again, thank you Caroline and Bruce Martel for the donation. We're in the midst of smarter balanced assessment. All of our third through sixth grade students have participated in the math portion. We have one fifth grader that has to make up one of the sessions, but the window is until June the 12th, so we, we have plenty of time for that makeup. We've had some technology issues about connectivity and that, but overall, everything's been pretty smooth. Next week, we begin English Language Arts, which is the reading portion and writing portion for our third graders. And over the next four weeks, then we have third one week, fourth the next week, then fifth and sixth. So over the next four weeks, we should be completed here at Powell for the smarter balanced assessment. Questions on that?
No, that's good, it seems to be going smoothly.
It is, yep.
You said you ironed out the technology hookups?
Yeah, between Judy Beazan and some of our teachers and that, they were a big help. Skylar Lombombard is a building coordinator as long, as well as myself, so we're on top of it, making sure all kids are tested.
We're very happy to see it, because I tell you, it's technology's fine.
Yes, he is.
Thank you. That's it?
That is it.
Okay. One of the questions I had, did our insurance cover the water damage that we had?
It's in the process, everything was submitted.
It is in the process.
It's in process.
Yeah, purchase orders have been put together and everything's, I'll check and double check, but it's been submitted to the insurance company.
Okay, all right, good. Okay. One thing that I probably should have reminded our board at reorganization, and I didn't, there is actually, there was an incident where, Jim, you had called and emailed me and asked me to ask the principal to do something, which I did. You know, you, they sent a letter out to the parents. And so I did that very day, and then what happened was the next day, you called him and gave him a different direction. Well, I just wanted to remind the board that there's a hierarchy. If any one of you needs something, please go through the chair, because it's really not fair to our principal to have five different directions. You know, it will drive him crazy and then he won't be able to deal with the children because...
Crazier.
He'll crazier, either. But I, you know, I just would appreciate it if we, and it's always been the policy. And I always bring it up at reorganization, but I, I forgot, because our vice chair wasn't here, and I was thinking about where she was and we weren't with her, so. And the other thing was, I know we nominated Doug to be on the teacher negotiation, and when I went, I went to the meeting and the chair of the negoti- teachers' negotiation begged me not to give it up, because I've been in it for the last year, almost over a year. So I talked to Doug and he's, he was willing to just back down. So now I'm still on the teacher negotiation, but I didn't wanna upset Mr. Holbrook, and it made sense, I mean...
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't want you to switch the team in the middle.
In the middle, yes. So, and Doug was very good about understanding that, so. And then the other thing I forgot was Angie is gonna stay on the SU, but we never nominated someone as a alternate. First, so I guess I will volunteer to be the alternate for the SU, unless somebody else wants to take it. Doug?
I'll take it.
Will you take it? Oh, all right. So Doug, you will be our alternate for the SU. Angie, anytime you can't make it, if you just contact Doug?
Yep.
And then we'll make sure he gets the, the info before the meeting. Jim?
I just wanna comment that the other district alternates come whenever they want to, so if you just wanna come, it's fine, too.
Oh, definitely, yes.
It's open to the public, anyway.
Yeah. So the, but the alternates come, they just don't, they say, I'm, I'm the alternate, I'm not voting.
Right.
But the, the alternates, excuse me, regularly come.
And which is good, because then you're kind of brought up to date, too, as far as...
We can all speak for Powell when we go on here.
Right.
We're all welcome to speak.
So that works out good. Now, I just wanted to ask you about the policy.
That's what I was just gonna tell you, before I move on from that, I can't do the policy committee, I can't get out on time for that.
Okay, and that's at?
It's Mondays at 4:30.
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
4 o'clock on Monday?
I'll be taken.
The first Monday of every month, yeah.
First Monday.
Why don't you do it? You're the one that always cracks about policies.
When my mother dies.
Oh, my God, I'll do it. Really? You're gonna put that on me?
Don't, don't write that down.
I think the only problem I have on Mondays is until the, we normally have our teacher negotiation meetings on Mondays. If, maybe you and I could just kinda share that, but you'd have to take it right now, because...
That's fine.
And then what we can do is tag team it. I have no problem with that, but at the moment, Mondays are kinda tied up with negotiations. And they just started that they wanna work from 4 to 8. It was...
4:30.
3 to 6, but now...
Oh, the teachers.
Negotiations. So now it's gonna be 3 to 6.
Double hours, yeah.
Yes.
So when's the next policy?
Uh, this Monday.
And is that 4?
At 4, at Central.
Okay.
All right, and just, I will keep you posted as far, if I don't have a meeting, and it's the first Monday of every month?
First Monday of every month, yeah.
Did they change the time, because it used to be 4:30, I thought?
Um, I'm checking that time right now to make sure that I'm telling you the right time.
I thought it was, well, I asked about 4:30 and it was no. Oh, once, okay. I mean, my boss had no at 4:00.
Yeah, I have it at 4:30, so you're right, it's on my calendar for 4:30 Monday.
4:30.
So it's 4:30 or 4?
Uh, it's on my calendar, it's 4:30, I'm the one that said 4, so I'm gonna go by what's on my calendar.
Okay, it's always 4:30, I've always, yeah.
Yeah, they'll leave it at 4:00. First Monday, all right.
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
Yes, Angie, thank you. All right, and then, yeah, I'm the alternate. No, Doug is, oh, all right. SVU, I'll let Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen, know. Okay. So they did do a parent survey, it's right here, I'm gonna take it home and I'm going to go through it and, what's the word?
Correlate.
Correlate it. I was gonna say coagulate, but I'll correlate it.
Coagulate.
No, it could cause coagulation.
Yes, I, it probably could, who knows, indecisive. All right. In your packet, you have an anticipated FYI 16 bus needs. Is there any way we can make a couple copies? I would like Joel to have one.
Yeah, I've got some for him, but before you get into that, I'm, I'm, what I'd like to do is, first of all, there was a Powell Transportation Working Plan, and I wanted to just make sure we kind of review this.
You had gotten that at a previous month meeting?
Yeah, right. This was what was looked over before, and I wanted to let you know where we stand. As of right now, my mission, the SVU finance mission, was given the directive to work out costs that it would involve to do transportation, whether it's in-house or out-of-house. And so we've met with, I'm looking at, number one, we met with Todd and Linda O'Neill from the school here came, and we went over a list of different items that the school is doing for transportations. Then we had a meeting with Wendy Pierce, who was in the Special Education Department, and we had a meeting with her as to finding out what transportation needs that are involving Powell students are done through the SVU, I mean, through the special education. All of that was put together to generate this Powell Bus Usage Report, which we'll get to just shortly. I have extra copies here. Right now, if you look down at the bottom, we're going with a timeline of on, April 3rd is when we had the meeting, our due dates of when we would have all the transportation needs done, which, so we are completed with that process of the work plan. By April 21st, Rick and I were to finish up identifying all these and setting this together for the board to review. So we are now at the third line down, review spec, which involves the Powell Board on April 29th, to just kinda make sure that we dotted our i's and pressed our t's. The next process after this, and before we review it, will be that we will sit down and we need to come up with a few assumptions. The assumptions will be, how many buses are gonna be necessary, so that I understand or the finance department knows how to really cost this out. What are the different rates? What might the actual cost for maintenance be? How do we formulate an average of the last couple of years? It's gonna take the board and myself and finance to work these out, so that when we come up with a cost, it's gonna be the cost that everyone agrees with that is the most efficient cost that we feel that Powell in-house will be, need to spend.
And when is that date?
The date here that we have for the reviews, for the forecast of delivery cost is May 8th, okay? The preparing of the draft will come to the Powell Board the next meeting on May 20th.
May 8th, that's a Friday.
Well, that's a due date. We need to do this before May 8th. The process is that if it's, we're aiming for the...
So at this point, you don't have a date?
We don't have a date yet. We have to make sure that this work, or this transportation need is all set. But that, so that's the next step after we just review this tonight. But I just wanted to give you a heads up of what's coming down the road. Meeting of the assumptions, putting the assumptions and creating the costs, and then coming to the board next meeting, May 8th, or May 20th, with the costs that will be involved. At that point, the board will review these items and then give it to the SVU Board for them to do their action the next week, which is their meeting.
And Jim and I are both gonna be involved in that determination meeting?
Right, yes.
And you will let us know?
Yes.
What action are you anticipating for the Supervisory Union Board?
I'm sorry, once more?
What action are you anticipating for Supervisory Union Board?
Actually, the action, I think, would be that they would either pursue the waiver or not pursue it. They, they gave us the mission, upon your request to review or to issue a waiver, they asked us to do a cost analysis prior to making that decision. So you now will have the choice of sending them the information for them to pursue the waiver or change your motion at that meeting next, next month.
Joe, I wanted you to have this.
Actually, could I make a suggestion? The edu-, actually, I did get that.
Oh, okay.
The education bill doesn't look like it's gonna go through this year. And one reason, reason it cited that was, you know, they can't really even keep the transportation, you know, it's not enforceable, the transportation portion of that or the sped portion. You know, it seems though we're going through a lot of stuff, why don't we step back for a couple of years, until the state make up, makes up their mind and gets things, you know, the ball rolling on that?
The state has given a, given us a similar option. My discussions with the Agency of Education is, though we don't have it in writing, they would favorably look on a request for a waiver, so that you could continue to operate the way you are now for another year while everything is reviewed, to, which at that time, you would still have the option to pursue negotiations with the Supervisory Union and see if you wanted, you know, provide, have the transportation provided through them. So my discussion with the General Counsel from the AOE yesterday was that that would be an option, though they don't speak for the Secretary of Education, who would be ultimately granting the waiver. Their recommendation to her would be favorable that they would grant it for one year, because we are having these discussions. So that, I offer that as a possibility if we're worried about that July 1 timeline of, you know, being, being brought into compliance.
But to interject, following the process is really what we need to do.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to make sure that process is followed.
And that's why we would get the waiver, because we have shown that, we can show that we'll put a process in place to study this.
And I think it's good for us to know the cost analysis. I mean, we could sit here and say, you know, well, we can't, we, but we strongly believe we can.
Right.
But I think it...
with the costs that will be involved. At that point, the board will review these items and then give it to the SVS, um, SVSU board for them to do their action the next week, which is their meeting.
And Jim and I are both gonna be involved in that determination meeting?
Right, yes.
And you will let us know?
Yes.
What action are you anticipating for the supervisory union board?
I'm sorry, once more?
What action are you anticipating for supervisory union board?
Uh, actually, the action I think would be that they would either pursue the, um, waiver or not pursue it. They, they gave us the mission upon your request to review or to issue a waiver. They asked us to do a cost analysis prior to making that decision. So you now will have the choice of sending them the information for them to pursue the waiver or change your motion at that meeting next, next month.
Joel, I wanted you to have this.
Actually, could I make a suggestion? The educa, actually, I did get that.
Oh, okay.
The education bill doesn't look like it's gonna go through this year. And one reason, reason it cited that was, you know, they can't really even keep the transportation. You know, it's not enforceable, the transportation portion of that or the sped portion. You know, it seems though we're going through a lot of stuff. Why don't we step back for a couple of years until the state make up, makes up their mind and gets things, you know, the ball rolling on that?
The state has given a, given us a similar option. My discussions with the agency of education is, uh, though we don't have it in writing, they would favorably look on a request for a waiver so that you could continue to operate the way you are now for another year while everything is reviewed to, uh, which at that time, you would still have the option to pursue negotiations with the supervisory union and see if you wanted, you know, provide, have the transportation provided through them. So my discussion with the general counsel from the AOE yesterday was that that would be an option. Though they don't speak for the secretary of education, who would be ultimately granting the waiver. Their recommendation to her would be favorable that they would grant it for one year because we are having these discussions. So that, I offer that as a possibility if we're worried about that July one timeline of, uh, you know, being, being brought into compliance.
But to interject, following the process is really what we need to do.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to make sure that process is followed.
And that's why we would get the waiver, because we have shown that, we can show that we'll put a process in place to study this.
And I think it's good for us to know the cost analysis. I mean, we could sit here and say, you know, well, we can't, we, but we strongly believe we can. But I think if we need to have it in black and white, so as far as going through the cost analysis, I think that's very important.
But, but we'd like to see the actual figures.
Well, we will.
You know what I mean?
We will.
We wanna see, we don't wanna see Shasberrys running one bus for ninety thousand, but it's cheaper because they have ten less kids than we do. You know, let's get back to apples to apples.
Yes.
I mean, yes, we are doing the comparisons. We wanna make sure it is apples to apples, and so that's why we're taking our time.
You're comparing this, right, with Shasbury with two hundred and forty kids, ten kids less than us. And their transportation budget is a lot less, but what you don't tell us is they're only gonna run one bus this year. And we still, we have over two hundred of our two hundred and fifty kids that ride the buses. Where Shasbury, they're thinking about going down to one bus, or they are, right?
Well, they have three buses, and they did a study to see if they could do two, but they've decided to not mess with it, keep the three. Because when they did an actual student count, the morning the third bus had plenty of students, they were losing them in the afternoon. So for now, they're not, and that's what prompted their study, because of their three buses, one of them looked pretty empty in the afternoon. And that makes sense, because after school activities or whatever. So it, I don't, I don't know if we're comparing them to Shasbury.
No, actually, we're not doing an apples to apples to Shasbury at all. We're doing an apples to apples to panel doing it in-house versus whether, what the state is requiring, because we already have a contract with the other ones, whether we have to incorporate that. That's where the apples and apples will be. Shasbury is completely out of this cost analysis, so.
But you don't have to incorporate. I think you people would rather do it because it's easier for them.
No, we, we are, we are not saying that. We are following the rules that we were given by the legislature of the state of Vermont.
Is anybody else in the state of Vermont doing this?
Oh, there, there are plenty of schools that are going through this whole same process, having the same discussion with the state. And we're, that's why we're following it to the T, so that we can make sure our representation to the state is what we feel necessary. Hopefully, if it is not to their likings, they will give us a chance to rebuttal and come up and give other ideas, but we wanted to make sure.
And let's remember what, what prompted this in the first place. It was, we cautioned you to hold off on going out for an RFP for another bus because we had received two letters from the secretary of education, which, you know, hinted that you could potentially lose your transportation reimbursement because we weren't in compliance with, uh, with the, with the, with the law as far as how you provide transportation. I know, Jim, you've talked about, we could come in compliance by having the transportation arranged through the supervisory union. And that very well might be what happens, and then you continue to run your own buses. But we don't have enough information yet to even probably convince the supervisory union that they should do it.
I think we can end the conversation, thank you, I think we can end the conversation for the moment by exploring what you're talking about, this one year or maybe two-year waiver, while we continue to do. Super, we, we asked for, and the supervisory union, oh, we asked for a waiver.
Yeah.
And the supervisory union is doing that. That's, that's the work that Jim is working on.
I'm a little confused. Do we have to ask for the waiver? Is supervisory union?
The supervisory union through the superintendent has to ask for the waiver.
Supervisory union board.
Right, and so the board.
The board asked the superintendent to do it for us.
So the board made a motion to have us do this information so that they, they have it to, uh.
But I'm not suggesting that's, that keeps going on.
Yep.
And then I think we could have an action here tonight to authorize, to do whatever we have to do to ask for the one year.
Right, to request the supervisory union to instruct the superintendent to request a waiver, uh, to allow us, while this study is ongoing.
So this.
The goal would be two years, because why that would make sense for us is the bus contract runs another two years. So it, you know, I don't know if they'll buy that. They, when I, my phone conversation with them was, was, was about a one year, and that didn't seem like that was gonna be an issue. So that would give us a year to study how we continue to give you what you wanna do with the buses.
I just think it's better. My concern all along has been rushing into something that we don't know.
Exactly.
And I think it, it's, it makes more sense to step back, gather your information, do your analysis. I'd like to ask for two different bids, a sped bid and a regular bid, and I think that's important to look at both of those.
Yeah.
Well, we're not, we, we wanted to do that for a year or two if we do it. So what I'm saying is, here tonight.
Before?
I would like this board to authorize Angie and I to ask the supervisory union board, to ask the superintendent to go forward on the one or two-year.
Well.
State.
But I gotta just interject here, and that's, forgive me. You've already asked the board to ask for a waiver, and we're going through the process.
Yeah, well.
Is it a separate waiver that you're talking about? But I just don't wanna get it confused with that the board is asking for this information here, so we'll follow through with it.
No, because the.
What do you want from us, Jim?
Because the state is going to ask of me that I assure them that we are continuing to do this process. So we're not just asking for a waiver for a year to make the problem go away. We're making it so that we don't rush into any judgment. We have all our facts and figures there. And if it does turn out that it's going to be through the supervisory union, we have to figure out what that, what that looks like and how that works. And we're not gonna do that by July one, and, or we're not gonna do it well. So the waiver, the way, I think your motion to ask them for a waiver, uh, so that we can, for one, up to two years, so that we can continue to study this and work through the supervisory union financial office is appropriate.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that our representatives of supervisory union board, which is Angie and I, ask the board for what?
For direct?
To seek, uh, to, to direct the superintendent to seek a waiver.
Direct the superintendent to seek.
A waiver from the agency of education.
While we pursue our investigation.
Yeah.
For two years, right?
Yeah.
A year or whatever.
Uh, I'll ask for the two years, but at least one, you know.
For up to two years.
For up to two years. And, and then as part of that waiver, we're gonna submit what we already have, and we're gonna tell, you know, we will back it. They're gonna ask for evidence for us to back it up. Part of it, why we're asking for two years is, don't put the burden on us to go out to bid early and let the contract run out, and then we can, you know, all of, I'm confident we'll get a year. I can't promise the second year yet.
Okay, the motion's been made. I need a second.
So moved, or second, excuse me.
Second, is there any discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it? All right, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous.
So whatever appears in the minutes for the motion, Angie or I will read it at the supervisory union.
Yes.
Now, what can we do in, in that year or two, or we just stop?
We're gonna still work on this, we'll still follow this timeline and this work plan, because that's what we're gonna tell the state that we're doing. And, you know, we might very well have this settled by July of which way we're gonna, which way we're going to go, or what we're gonna recommend. Or you then have time to discuss it and all of that, but, uh, I'm concerned about, I don't wanna be up against the wall when July one comes. I think this gives us some breathing room.
And we just wanna make sure that we have time to rebuttal. We do not want a certain date to come and say to us, oh, I'm sorry, it's, this is, this is the done deal, this is, you have no way to request. Because we really don't want that. We wanna fight till the end. And in the end, we wanna be happy because there's a chance we, we can win.
And as you, you said earlier, you know, we only are guessing what the data's gonna show. We might be very surprised when the real numbers come out and all that. So we'll keep pursuing the work plan. I think they've developed a great work plan. I know Jim's done a lot of work on it. Rick's done a lot of work on it. We let them continue to go through the process, but all we're asking for is a waiver so that they have time to do it and do it correctly.
And there is, I haven't even had a chance to share with the board yet, but there are a couple of other issues that we can do. We can save the taxpayers money, and so that'll be brought up when Jim and I go to that meeting with you, Jim?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
All right.
But can, can we pursue the, the mini bus and do what we were going to, or do we have to stay status quo until?
I think our best bet is to take one step at a time.
Let's see, let's see if we get the waiver and then we can decide what we want.
When will we know if we have the waiver or not?
That I, I don't know. I, I imagine it would be fairly quick, so.
Because it'd be only fair to the employees if they find out that, you know, they wanna pursue somewhere else.
Yeah, because this is my point too. There's already a little grumbling about, you know, am I gonna have a job next year? Should I get another job and, and?
We should probably know, I mean, that's just my thought. When we meet in May and we go over figures, we, we should pretty much know whether we're sitting on the fence or.
That's what our aim is.
We're doing hoops.
That's what our aim is.
So we're, we're talking.
And you still will, after the May meeting, you would still have the option, you're gonna have one more bite at the apple at the June meeting, that you could go to Jim's plan of asking the supervisory union to go, you know, to, to.
Extend it for a year.
Run it through, run it through the supervisory union. So that, that option, which then would bring you in compliance, more or less, so. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, I'm not gonna wait to the SU board meeting to have that conversation with the agency of education. I will have it, I, I, how quickly can they respond? We can have the, the request, you know, I, I know the request is coming, so I will have everything ready. So if the supervisory, uh, union gives their approval that night, I think it's the twenty-fifth, right? Of May is the supervisory union meeting. They give their approval that night, then we'll be ready to go.
It'll close next day.
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, so we'll mail it the next day and, uh.
Yes, the twenty-seventh is the issue.
Yeah, because you're, you, you make a good point. People are kinda in a limbo right now, yeah.
So May twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh is the SVSU.
Everybody read the minutes, so we could all, if you wanna tweak the motion, you can either tweak it.
You want, you want everything in writing.
So the minutes at our next meeting here, we have the motion the way.
Okay, so before we end this discussion, I just wanna go down this list so that you all understand what we are going to be costing out. The first top block is basically the normal, regular transportation that we're doing to and from school, the after-school program, and the summer program. All right, each, each one, um, the top one is four buses, after-school is one bus during the summertime, or after-school, and then the one bus during the summer program, all right? We'll again have a meeting to make sure we assume what needs to be.
Okay, let me, let me stop you there. If I'm correct, Joel, you correct me if I'm wrong. That summer program is, is paid for by the town, is it not?
We, we split it. Todd can probably tell you better. I think they have a summer program plus a summer rec.
The summer rec, yeah.
So I think.
But our summer program is separate.
But I think the town pays for what, half of it?
Half of it, yes. Yes.
And, and the school pays for the other half, right?
I'm pretty familiar with the board chair, the select board, so I know that. They have, they always split it.
Yeah.
They always pay for all of it.
But this is really a list of what you need, not who's paying for what right there, right?
Well, it will, yes.
Well, it can make a difference.
At, at the moment, but when we meet in May, that's, dollars are gonna.
I'll have to check on it, because I'm not sure how it's going about that they are splitting the cost, because, um.
Here, let me explain how it works, okay? For fifteen, twenty years, the towns, um, had the summer rec program here at the school for the month of July. The town. It was strictly the town, the school, they used the school for it. The town paid for the entire program. They paid Christine Duval, who's been the chair of that program, and all the people that worked for her. The town pays for it. They needed a bus. They asked the school board, could we use your bus and supply a driver? We will pay it. They paid it up until.
How did they pay it?
Three, how did they pay it? Through the town.
And the payment went to?
It went.
I have to check into that, because I do not have any records of payments being made from the town.
Not, not through the school. It didn't go through central office. It went right, directly through the town.
Exactly, through the town.
The town paid it.
You'd have to talk to Linda.
Talk to Linda and, uh, and our town treasurer.
I just wanna make sure so I can check. So the town paid it?
The town paid it.
They paid the bus drivers?
They paid the bus drivers, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. And then what happened up until, I think, three years ago, or four years ago, maybe, maybe five, they decided to take that month of rec program. They need it, and I believe it was Joyce, started the, uh, reading and math. They felt at the same time that our kids are coming on in the bus to go to the rec program. Certain number of hours they've spent doing their math and reading. And then I think they, at the time, when it first started, the rest time, they, they went down and did the activities through the rec program. Again, once that started, then we started sharing the drivers' cost.
Okay, so who was paying the drivers? As far as I know, we're paying the drivers for the whole time.
No.
No, no.
No, we only paid for half, the town paid for half.
Half.
Are they getting a check from the town?
The drivers.
The drivers, yes.
The drivers are getting a paycheck from the town? Okay, so then, and that's continuing now?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, we do not, we have no knowledge of this, so that's why.
Well, that's why I'm telling you.
We need to change this summer program through Todd.
Yeah.
To tell us what, uh, amount of time is necessary for the school portion. And that's why we bring this to you, so that we could make sure that we are judging everything, so.
And as far as the parent needed, I didn't, I, that's, again, you know, that's, the biggest part is, is for the town. You know, you can check with our treasurer, the town and school treasurer, Ellen.
No, I will, but, um, to our knowledge, to our knowledge, it was just one hundred percent school, so.
I can guarantee you, guarantee you, that's not true.
Okay.
And definitely we'll follow up with Linda, because Linda was at our meeting and that wasn't, that wasn't brought up.
Right, okay, so, um, we'll talk to you tomorrow.
And I believe.
I'll be in Killington, but.
Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday?
Sure.
Okay.
I believe it might even be Lisa, who was the bus driver. Is that correct, Joel?
Yeah.
You can check with her.
Okay.
Ask her, who's checked.
Yeah, I will ask her how she got paid, you know, when they split it, actually.
But is it split now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Still split, so she's still, she's still getting a check from the town?
Well, that, we're just talking about summer.
No, no, just the summer.
It's the summer program, that's all.
Not the actual school program.
The, the summer program that runs in the month of July.
Okay, all right, we'll, um, pursue it on Friday. Okay, the next section is, um, field trips that, um, we've gone through and kind of made a list of, there were about thirty-five different trips. There's one bus that's needed for each of those trips. We did find a couple of field tri, uh, field trips that go up to Shasbury where all five buses are necessary.
There was some, yeah, with multiple buses.
All right, um, we have the Montpelier bus, that's, um, a charter bus, so that's, um, would not be incorporated in the cost. It would be part of the, um, transportation contracted services, so that would stay, um, separate. And then, um, Bennington trip, there was like a three-run for a certain trip there, so that's what's gonna be costed out. Um, we have a miscellaneous, um, transportation items that, there are buses here for evacuation, um, if it's a cold out. My assumption is when it's cold outside, the kids have a place to get onto a bus, or at the same time, they have periods of time when the bus is, um, available for teaching the kids how to enter a bus and how to get off the bus. So that has to make, make sure that it's available, um, in-house or out of house. There's the SQUEE program that we had a presentation tonight, that we wanna make sure that's included. From that point up is all of the in-house normal transportation that you, is, um, offered right now by the school. The second box down is everything that the special education is offering at this time. And so these are the items that will be costed out separately, um, based on a discussion and the assumptions that we will have between now and when this is due, to make sure that we understand, um, what's needed on the bus and what buses would be doing it, and, um, we'll go from there.
Jim?
Probably off on almost another subject, but we're gonna, we're thinking about buying a minibus. Would all these sped transportation things be covered by the, if we did get a smaller bus? Would this be the list of things, the core things?
We will incorporate that into our costing to make sure that the time that a bus driver is available can handle all of these and that there are no overlapping times.
But is this the list that, do you think this is a good list of, uh, the core things that will be handled by a new bus?
We think it's the list, yes, based on, talking on Wendy and everything.
Yes.
These are some of the items that we talked prior to.
Our, our cost offset for the new bus would be whatever this comes out to.
Our cost offset?
What?
It would cost based on, the cost would be based on using the smaller bus.
On us buying another bus and using it.
Which would be cheaper.
Thank you.
Yes, because we know one of them alone goes two blocks and costs us ninety dollars, so we just know that we can do it a lot cheaper.
But now, that one, you, you wanna stop and think about, do you wanna run a bus clear to Bennington to pick up a couple of kids and run them over to the rec center and bag?
Well, I.
You know, there's some things that you don't. You know, there's some things that you don't want to.
Right, I mean, we did have that discussion on if there is a, if the kids are already up in Bennington-
Yeah.
And then the bus has to go from Benningt-, I mean, from Bennington to rec center, that would have to incorporate it, not in-house and not part of the outside cost. It would be shared with Bennington, and they would just charge back to you a portion of that bus for them, so that-
Because they, they must have more than-
Yes, they have more, so.
Than our two.
Right, so they, we'd come up with the cost of the bus, divided by the total number of kids on it, and charge PONL for just the number of kids that they have.
Good point, good point, Joel. I understand, I understand where you were coming from on that one.
Because some of them may overlap, and if we did do a mini-bus, you know, we'd be-
Right, that would involve the on-point swimming and also the NECC swimming, so those there-
What's the NECC?
That's a special program that's up in Bennington.
The autism program that's at Silverstone.
Okay, yeah. And again, you know, you have a bus up there and you're bringing-
Definitely.
Kids from multiple towns, I can see that, yeah?
Definitely.
All right.
So this is what we'll do, and we'll double-check on the summer program one and work up some numbers, get together, have our assumptions drawn up. And for your next meeting next month, we will have costs, hopefully, hopefully have costs. That's our game plan.
Thanks for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Yes, we appreciate it. Does anyone have any other questions pertaining to this? I guess not.
No.